I call the August 6, 2019 Planning Board Meeting to order. My name is Kathy Barnard. I'm the Chairman of the Planning Board. Sitting to my left is Von Dugan, who is the Vice Chairman. To my right, Peter Goodwin, and John Thurston, and Brad Harriman, who is the Representative from the Board of Selectmen. The first item, we have two public hearings tonight, and so let me just quickly go through the procedures. The applicant, once I read the application into the record, the applicant has an opportunity to explain the application and go through the relevant factors. Planning Board members can ask questions during that time. Matt Sullivan, and I forgot to introduce Matt Sullivan, who's the Director of Planning and Development. Matt will add any other information that he thinks is important as far as the application is concerned. Planning Board members then have to accept the application as complete, and so they would need to, if the application is complete, they would need to make a motion to that effect. We would vote on accepting the application as complete, and then I can open the public hearing. Any member of the public who wants to comment on the application, that would be the opportunity for you to do that. Once we've heard all of the public comments and Planning Board members are comfortable that they have enough information, we'll close the public hearing, and generally, we will vote on the application this evening. I also neglected to mention on the second application, there are some waivers, and so we need to, the Planning Board needs to discuss the waivers, determine if we want to grant them, and we would make a motion to grant the waivers or not, and then continue on with accepting the application. So, that's the procedure. The first public hearing and first application, MRNH Retreat LLC. This is a special use permit to demolish an existing garage and rebuild the garage within the wetlands buffer. Tax map 149-3, case 2019-16.
I need to recuse myself. This has been a client of mine.
Okay, thank you, Von. And so that means that there will be four members reviewing and voting on this application. I just want to note at the beginning that we did have a site visit at 6:30 out at the property. Three members attended, Brad Harriman, John Thurston, and myself, so there was no quorum. We just simply walked the property, observed the existing structure and the location of the proposed structure, and then we finished the site visit. And so we started at 6:30 and finished at 6:40. So that will be in the record, is that right?
That's correct.
Okay, all right, thank you. Okay, so if the applicant would like to make a presentation?
Thank you. My name's Randy Walker. I work for Walker &amp; Barney here in Wolfboro. I'm here tonight with Brian Berlin, who did the surveying work and some of the calculations. We also had assistance from Peter Cooperdock, who was a licensed wetland scientist that did the wetlands work. The property is owned by MRNH LLC, the principal of which is Corky Mezner, who might come a little bit later. He was tied up in Manchester and said he would try to make it at 7:00. It was hopeful we would be second on the agenda, but he said, "Go forward," so we are going forward. Basically, for those of you that saw the property, it's located at 29 North Kenny Shore Road, on which is a dilapidated two-car garage that contains about 615 square feet. He would like to replace it with a 1,008-square-foot three-car garage. I just want to be clear from the beginning that about 60% to 70% of the proposed garage does not need a special use permit. It's outside of the wetlands buffer, outside of the wetlands setback, not in a wetlands area. But there is a portion of the proposed garage which is in the wetlands buffer and setback, about 30% to 40%, and that arguably needs a special use permit. Now, the existing garage has about 223 feet of square-foot footage that encroaches into the wetlands buffer. The proposed garage will reduce that down to 217 square feet. So it's a reduction, it's a small reduction, but nonetheless, an improvement. From a wetlands setback perspective, the current garage has about 375 square feet that encroaches into the wetlands setback. The proposed garage, again, reduces that to 371. Not a big reduction, but nonetheless, a reduction. So overall, if you approve this project, the new proposed garage will be better from a wetlands perspective than the existing garage. Now, this property is on Lake Wentworth, and the applicant owns the last two lots on North Kenny Shore Road. So the lot that we're looking at tonight is the second-to-last lot, but he also owns the one just past it. So basically, he's the end of the road. It's a dead-end road for all intensive purposes, and he has the last two homes. The garage that we're talking about is well away from Lake Wentworth, so there's no setback issues from the lake. We also have a letter from the southwestern abutter, Isaacson, and I provided to Matt, I'm happy to give it to you, that indicates they have no objection. So if you look at this property from the lake, my client owns to the right, clearly no objection from that abutter. He owns to the left, no objection from that abutter. He also owns across the tracks, and no objection on that side. It's also, as a result of this property being at the end of the road, has no traffic at all. You know, it's a dead-end road, and it's very, very narrow. And I walked the property myself for the first time last night, and, you know, I walked around the garage five feet, I walked around at 10 feet. I said, "Where's the wetland?" And I'm not questioning, by the way, Peter Cooperdock's definition of wetland. I'm not here to challenge his definition, but from the untrained eye, I didn't literally see any wetlands for quite some distance. So, in any event, the garage itself is not in a wetland, but it is in the buffer and it is in the setback, both the proposed and the existing one. So the applicant looked at various options. What do we do? We've got an old dilapidated garage that's rotting at the bottom, and the first one was rebuild it in place. That's pretty easy. Throughout the state, you can generally rebuild your existing structure where it is in the same footprint. And if this application is denied, that may very well be what he does, which would not, we think, be beneficial for the town or to the site. Number two is to move it somewhat southwest, which is what you have before you, and that's the option that he decided on. Another option was to rebuild it exactly where it is, and then, next year, at a later date, just put the third bay on the southeast side of it, which we don't need a special use permit for because there is no encroachment if we just add it on to the existing structure to the south and west, to put that third bay right there. I came up with that argument last night, that proposal, because there is no violation of side setbacks, there is no violation of the buffer. So that would be an option, but honestly, one we didn't think of until the application was already in. The other option is to move the garage to the west, and that would be the only place that it could possibly be moved on the site. It can't go north or east because that would push it into the wetlands. It can't go up near the road because that area is all wet up there. Obviously, can't go near the lake because we have a 50-foot reference. So the only spot that it could possibly go, other than where we suggested this to the west, and I'll address why that is not practicable, which I believe is the test, when I get to the criteria. So, basically, what our client is faced with is he's got a fully-developed lot. This is not a case where we're writing on a blank canvas. He's got a house, he's got a garage, he's got a septic system, he's got a well, he's got a boat ramp down on the water, which you'll see, which he does put boats in and out periodically, and he's got a nice grassed yard, which you should be able to see on the bottom of a couple of the plans. If not, we have pictures of them up here. So with those, I'll say, constraints, he believes that the proposal he has is the most practicable going forward. Now, I suggested three different ways to go forward. The first was that we don't need a permit at all, and I made that argument in my application. I'll address it briefly, because I believe we don't need a special use permit under 175-7E. Second position was we don't need it under 175-10. Assuming that the Board disagrees with both of those suggestions, and we go forward with a straight application, and my suggestion procedurally is that we deal with the application, the criteria. If we comply, then we don't need to go back through, that we don't need it at all. And as I'm speaking, my client is now walking in on your right wing here. So, what often happens is on Lake Winnipesaukee homes is the extent you've got a home that is inside the 50-foot reference line, a lot of people will rebuild inside that, get back to the 50-foot line, and then go vertical and out. And we're not suggesting that we do that, but a good chunk of this garage is in that sort of mode, trying to keep the existing footprint inside where it is, but less so, and then put the addition outside where there is no violation and we could build outside without any kind of a permit. So we believe that most of the garage, as proposed, would be fully compliant with the wetlands buffer setbacks, et cetera, because only, but only a minority of the garage is actually in the buffer envelope and the setbacks. So let me just get into the application itself. First, I suggest that no special use permit is required under 175-7E. And I quoted it in my materials here, and it says, "Repair or replacement of legally pre-existing use of structure," which is what we have. We've got a legally pre-existing structure that's on the site, that's within the buffer setback, which it is. "The need of extensive repair," which it is, it says it may be rebuilt. "The newer rebuilt structure shall maintain the same three-dimensional envelope, same building footprint, roofline, and square footage on the parcel." So, this proposed garage is basically inside that same footprint. Now, there is about 64 square feet because they clogged a little bit, but as a condition of approval, we would be happy to say we'll keep it 100% in that footprint, although less so, if that is an issue. But I believe, at least my reading of it, and I've read it a number of times, that 175-7E specifically permits rebuilding of pre-existing structure, which I think is the law throughout the state, but I don't think that's anything unique to Wolfboro, as long as you build on the same footprint. Second argument is that 175-10B provides that lot redevelopment is permitted within the wetlands setback, wetlands buffer, and wetlands themselves, when no alternative location on the parcel exists which has a less detrimental impact on a wetland. It goes on to very specifically define, what does "less detrimental impact" mean? And it says one of the next two things. One, development is downgradient from the jurisdictional wetland. That makes sense. You don't want to build a building upstream where you might have issues. This building is downgradient, so we comply with B1, although we can also comply with B2, which says development and/or redevelopment within a previously disturbed area, which we have, and where the previously disturbed area provides no protection of the wetlands, and there is no protection of wetlands with the existing garage. It was just built, let's say, 50 years ago, or a long time back. So I believe that the proposal complies with both of those criteria, which it defines as being having a less detrimental impact. It's downgradient from the jurisdictional wetland, so B1 applies. It's also within a previously disturbed area, even though none of the garage is in a wetland itself, it is in the buffer and setback, and there is no current protection of wetlands. So in short, we have full compliance with both B1 and B2, even though one of those two is required. So if the Board is inclined to accept either one of those, we would be happy to move along and leave, but I will go to the third argument, which is what you expect from everybody that comes in for a special use permit, which is that we fully comply with the criteria. So let's go through the seven-part criteria for a special use permit. Number one says, "The proposed activity minimizes the degradation to or loss of wetlands and wetlands buffers, and compensates for any adverse impact to the functions and values of the wetlands and buffers." Well, the proposed garage beneficially has less encroaching area into the wetlands buffer and setback than currently exists. It's an improvement there, too, and therefore creates less degradation. So I believe we comply with number one. Number two, "The proposed activity will have no negative environmental impact to abutting or downstream property, indoor hydrologically connected water, and/or wetlands resources." Again, we have abutters on both sides and across the street that aren't objecting. The new garage will be better from a wetlands perspective, because unlike the existing garage, if you look on the proposed plan, which is the garage on the right side of the plan, existing conditions is on the left, you'll see that there's two drip lines. The gradient side of the garage to provide improved drainage, capturing the water, be less erosion as a result, less siltation. So the applicant has tried to improve the site, improve capturing the water where none currently exists at all. Three, "The proposed use or activity cannot practicably," that's the key word, "be located otherwise on the site to eliminate or reduce the impact to the wetlands or buffer." I just want to note that that's different from the test of 10B, which says, "There's no alternative location exists." That isn't the test for this part. The test is, "Practically, cannot practicably be located otherwise on the site." As I noted, this is not a virgin lot. This lot has been fully developed, it's grandfathered. The entire area that we're talking about is outside the 50-foot reference line from Lake Wentworth, so that's not impacted. The proposed garage is more centrally located to the lot, which is a plus from the abutter's perspective. It's also setback farther from the wetlands buffer. It's setback farther from the wetlands setback, and it can't be moved farther south, because you can see in the proposed location, the house is there, there's a septic system and septic tank that needs to be pumped. And the applicant does like to drive around the house to get through, and if we move that garage any further south, it gets squeezed too tight, and you can't do that to get around the house. The only other possible area would be to move it to the west, and that wasn't being practical, given the existing layout of the property. Number one, the problem is every foot we move it farther west, we start to have turnaround problems with vehicles. If you try to drive into the existing garage, you can easily back out, turn around, and get out. We've moved it a little bit west, but for every foot that you move it over, it becomes tougher and tougher. So last night, I went home and I measured my Ford F-250 pickup truck. It's between 19 and 20 feet long, and if I tried to back it out, you notice where the turns are to get in, in the proposed garage. It'll just be backing out over the yard. And you put a snowplow in the front of that truck in the wintertime to try to plow the garage, you'd have to go up to the garage, drop your blade, back that snow up. Let's just say you pull it back 10 feet. You can push it towards the house, but it's going to stack up too quickly. You push it to the left of the garage into the wetlands area. There's a telephone pole, which looks like downtown Wolfboro. It's got three wires off it. It goes into the Isaacson's house, it goes into this house, it goes into the garage, and it's right on the corner of the garage, of the, sorry, the driveway and the yard. And you don't have any room to get much snow in there with that snowplow. So even if you move the garage 10 feet to the west, you're going to start limiting your turnaround space, and you're not going to have any place to put that snow over there. There's also a very nice yard there. It's not a big yard, but it's a yard. And you can see why the original owner that built that garage sort of tucked it off in the corner, because that was the most practical place to put it on the lot. And that's where it's been functioning for 50 years, 40 years, I don't know how long, how old that structure is. It's got T-111 siding on it, I think, so that may be dating it a little bit, but in any event, there's a nice yard there, and for every foot that you suggest we may push it west, we start losing yard. And it's nice grassy yard. Again, you should have pictures there. If not, they're right here on the lower left, where you can see the nice yard over there. You also got a viewscape. For those of you that were there, you looked down the driveway, and you looked at the house, and maybe the lake off to the wings, and you can't see this garage. It's well tucked in around the corner. We like it tucked in around the corner. One of the things that any real estate agent will say is, you know, it's the appeal from the street, what does it look like? And viewscape is important for value, and if you park the garage farther west, it gets more and more into the view, and most people don't want to look at a garage. The other thing is, is from a safety standpoint, and actually, I'll move over to the alternate Brian drafted up an alternate plan that moved this garage all the way to the west, and you should have that plan in front of you. And one of the downsides of that is, is that you drive down the driveway, you can really only get into one bay of the garage. The driveway is narrow, you drive into basically bay one. You can't get into bay two or three unless you go into the wetlands setback. And you'll notice that he's got a turnaround there for that garage that pushes you into the wetlands setback, I believe, in excess of what it has now. So if you park it right at the end of the driveway, you can't get in. So that's the first problem, that you can't even get down there. And if you did get in, and I'll just use my pickup truck as an example, how do you get out again? Either back all the way out the driveway, or you try to turn around, but again, you're into the wetlands buffer and the wetlands setback. And if you had a fire in the house, how's a fire truck get in? They're going to have to stop in front of the garage and go around, where now they can drive right up to the house. And the ambulance comes, same problem. Well, from a health, safety, and welfare perspective, it isn't practicable to move that garage to that alternative location. Similarly, if you have to plow snow in the winter, where are you going to push it? No good way to backdrag that snow and then push it out. Again, we've already talked about the view. Now, the Conservation Commission did write a letter and suggested that the proposal was very beneficial, beneficial to the wetlands buffer, less encroachment, beneficial to the wetlands setback, plus. It went on to say that, but when you offset that with the increased impervious area, on balance, they didn't think that that was favorable. That's their proposal. And I think that they are, I'll say, a fallacious argument. It was a very nicely-written letter, by the way. The tone was nice, but it said, you know, you're increasing the impervious area. We are, we're going from a 600-square-foot garage roughly to a 1,000-square-foot garage. We're going to increase impervious area by 400 square feet, absolutely, but it really doesn't make any difference. Why doesn't it make a difference? Because we're not remotely close to the impervious area limit. We can increase the impervious area. We could put a two-bedroom addition on the house and increase the impervious area even more than this garage does, and not even come before you for a special use permit because we're not near the 30% mark. Right now is about 18.5%, I believe, according to Brian's calculations of impervious area coverage. The proposal will increase it at 22%, not close to the 30. So even though the impervious area is increased, it's fully permitted. So it's really a red herring issue. So let's just presume that we take that alternative location and we split it between where we're proposing and where it is. Go halfway measure, you know, maybe put it in the middle somewhere. And the problem with that is, is every time you move it west of where it is, you have turnaround problems, you're going to lose grass, and you have snowplow removal problems. And that's why the original person that built this garage put it off in the corner, because it's workable, it's practicable, which is what the application test is. So for all those reasons, we believe we comply with number three. Number four, "The proposed activity utilizes applicable best management practices that will be adhered to during the construction process." Number five, "Have federal or state permits been received?" The answer to that is yes. You know, they've been through the TIC already, and the state shoreline permit has been obtained, and a copy of that was attached. Number six says, "We're applicable. What's proof of compliance with other state and federal regulations?" There are none. Number seven, "When a special use permit application requires a national shoreline permit, you shall attach a copy of it in the plan." We obtained it, we attached it, and we therefore believe that this project is fully compliant with your rules and regulations and the criteria. We therefore respectfully request that you approve the application. Again, we do have a letter from the abutter to the south and west that says they have no objection to this at all, and we did provide that with Matt, and I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you. Why don't we go to Matt, and then we'll have some questions?
Sure. I'll just first confirm that I do have a letter from the Isaacsons stating that we have reviewed the MRNH Retreat LLC's special use permit application, have no objection to the same, and it is signed by both property owners there. I also want to distribute a construction sequence document that was provided by Mr. Berlin prior to the meeting. That references one of the items that was outstanding within my review. I will provide. To quickly address Mr. Walker's initial statements regarding the applicability of the Wetlands Conservation Overlay District, I actually do agree with Mr. Walker in the sense that I think the ordinance is somewhat unclear. I think that it does provide some vague language associated with whether or not a special use permit is required for this sort of activity. I would, however, point out that the Planning Board, I think, took great care in crafting the language within the ordinance, and under 175-8, which is actually the permitted uses section of this ordinance, they carefully identified five permitted uses within the Wetlands Conservation Overlay District that did not require special use permitting. That included passive recreation, wildlife or fisheries management, scientific research, agriculture, or forest management. They did not include reconstruction of a structure even as it existed at the time. So in my opinion, because it's not clearly delineated there, it is not a permitted use exempt from special use permitting. Further, as Mr. Walker stated in referencing 175-10B, in my opinion, the inclusion within the 175-10 section, which is by nature the special uses section, inclusion there automatically triggers a special use permitting review by the Planning Board. So just to quickly address those two items, I think that the application, because of its disturbance and because of the way the ordinance reads, does require a special use permit. That aside, the application is well-prepared. I had very few outstanding items within my review. Construction sequence is really the primary one. I did want to clarify one comment. I wrote that the health inspector did not provide any health-related concerns. The health inspector did include a memo that did not have any concerns, just for your information. It was a little unclear with my language there. I obviously would emphasize the Conservation Commission's comments, but also emphasizes Mr. Walker said that the application is in full compliance with the Wolfboro Planning and Zoning Ordinance in the Shorefront Residential District, understanding fully the impervious surface impacts, they are compliant with that section of the ordinance, and I think the applicant has a right to proceed that way. So I would echo their comments. That said, I think the application is complete.
Okay. Planning Board members, questions? Mr. Walker or Matt Sullivan?
Good evening. I was at the site and took a look at the proposal, and the wetland area that I identified was on the northern side of, just cupping underneath the side of the building, and that would probably be where the old timers would put the building, in the least usable spot. So we kind of recognized that that was a location that was probably historic, and the land around it, you could see that the grass on the high side was about two feet higher than the back of the building, and then you had the corrugated pulvert that goes up the back of the building, which takes a lot of the ground surface water and brings it down the side, and there was really no push of water to the high side, which was the applicant's own property anyway, so we identified- the applicant's own property anyway, so we identified that as not being a, a problem. And then we looked at the, the area around the garage, and we really looked at the, see the nice grass, and what we were thinking, well, I was thinking, was a lot of that material in there was probably the Albee Pit sand, which is a real fine sand, and we were, I was thinking, again, how, how are you going to get more of the water down through the ground out in front? Are you gonna put a horse aggregate down, or are you gonna pave it, or, it was just a thought there that you could, you're gonna leave the grass out there, or, I mean, what I'm seeing here is, on the alternative location, you got two little hammerheads drawn out. On the other, on the proposed location, which I'm fine with, actually, I, I just don't see where the little hammerheads, or how you would kind of back out of there, would you just do the...
My, my understanding is, and Corey can correct me if I'm wrong, that they plan on leaving it just the way it is. It's a gravel driveway, North Kenny Shore Road is entirely gravel, and the driveway in front of the garage is basically grass and gravel, and my belief is, is the intent is to leave it exactly that way, and there is no pavement shown on that at all. We're not trying to put any more impervious surface, we like grass, and one of the reasons we didn't want to move it any farther to the west, is we're losing, you know, nice lawn, as you point out, with probably beautiful sand underneath.
Yeah, so are you gonna save the tree, the pine tree, on the southeast corner?
So thank you for bringing that up. So you can't really respond without being at the microphone, but, so let's just talk about that one tree. There is a beautiful, tall pine tree at the southeast corner of that, and one of the downsides of rebuilding exactly where we are, is we are told that we will destroy that tree's root structure. We're not pulling the garage far to the south and west, but it would save that. And I'll go back to 1989, before this board, and we had the subdivision, I'll just leave it nameless for the moment, but we needed to get Jeb Bradley's vote, and he was on the planning board back then, and he refused to approve this subdivision unless we protected the oldest tree in Wolfboro with a 50 by 50 area around it. And so we resisted that, because we're sort of in the middle of a lot, but ultimately, he wasn't moving at all, so we put this 50 by 50, you know, box around the oldest tree in Wolfboro to try to protect it. So trees are important, that tree was important, according, and it's a beautifully tall tree, if it falls, it's gonna crush his house, because it's gotta be close to 100 feet tall, and a logger would love it, it's a logger's dream. But we are trying to save that tree by pulling it out, and also with the proposal that we have, there's no tree cutting. If we went to the, this alternate plan, all the way over there, which is fully outside of the wetland, we're gonna cut down a lot more trees to do that.
Anything else?
I have a, I am one who tries to look forward, and, you know, you ended up suggesting that the impertinial surface could be improved by expanding the house, and then it's similar to what you're doing by expanding the garage, and, you know, so therefore, there is a possibility of a lot more impervious surface on this lot, and it probably doesn't matter particularly, and you are working with putting some, you know, drainage in there. But is this something that we should worry about in the future with a similar type change in use, change in, in building structure, or is this something that we can basically say is small enough, so we don't need to worry about it?
The latter, small enough, we don't need to worry about it. This is basically a guest cottage to the primary home, which is the next house down. There is no plans at all that I've heard, and we went through a fair amount of hoops to even get here today to do any additions at all. You can see from the structure that's there, it's nicely laid out, it's away from the lake, it's got a beautiful view, no plans on expanding it.
The fact that there are no plans, it doesn't mean that that's not gonna be true in 40 years from now.
Right.
And so therefore, that's the question, is this, is this something that we need to worry about looking forward into, into 40 years into the future, that this kind of change is gonna be made on 100 properties around Lake Wentworth, and another 100 around Winnebago Saki?
Well, if they are, we know we have you to protect us, and we got Ann back here, who I'm sure will be here to protect us as, as well, to make sure that the lake is, is protected, because it is a beautiful lake, it is pristine, and as long as there's compliance with the rules that we have, and again, we're at 22%, could go up to 30, but, you know, this gentleman has no plans to build.
I happen to know that the guy likes the lake, and he doesn't want to destroy it. I, I know that.
Matt, do you want to comment on the issue?
On the potential for this on other lots? Of course it's, yeah, I mean, of course it's possible. I think that homeowners have a right to expand up to the impervious surface threshold, and I think that they will maximize their ability to do so unless they don't see it in their best interests, or they potentially are stewards of the lake, and hopefully, we get a balance of something right in the middle, right? So I think that the option for the planning board looking forward outside of the application would be to look at its impervious surface thresholds, but this applicant has the ability to do it at this time, and I'm not sure that...
But it's also within the purview of the planning board to look at that standard in the zoning ordinance, and if we feel that it's too liberal, we could make a proposal to change it, so it's really within our, our purview.
Thank you.
Other questions?
Yeah, so just, how much more, so you could add another 12%, which, what's that in square footage?
No idea. The lot's over half an acre.
That's 12% of the, of the surface square of the pervious area on the house.
Again, I, we didn't even look at it, it was, we're just trying to replace an existing garage.
Yes. Thank you. Brad, did you have anything?
No, not really, just, I went out on the site view, site visit there, and I actually liked the, the proposed location for the garage to go in on the, where the existing garage is now. I agree with Randy, I think the, the impacts, you know, the minimal, they are less on the setback and on the buffer, and the buffer setback part. I think it fits better than the lot right there, and I think that's the, the best approach to it. I do like the fact, too, they got the drip line trenches around there, and then the gutter feeding the garage door side of the building, getting that water into that drainage system also. It takes in the impervious water from the roof and putting it into the ground, and not just dumping it on top of the ground somewhere, you're actually putting it down into the trenches, so those are all very positive things, and...
Okay, okay, this application is considered complete, all of the required documents have been submitted, some may be willing to make a motion to that effect.
Some of them.
Thank you. Motion has been made and seconded, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstentions. Okay, I can open the public hearing now, thank you, Mr. Walker. If any member of the public wanted to comment on this application, now is the time to do that.
I guess I would say, and it might help answer Mr. Goodwin's question a little bit better, but whenever a waterfront property does get developed with more impervious surfaces, it has to go to the state for a shoreline impact permit, and in Wolfboro, it needs a municipal impact permit. And if we get this special use permit tonight, we still need the municipal shoreline impact permit, so Matt would have more to do.
Okay, thank you. Okay, Matt, do you have some conditions? I don't see anyone wanting to make any comment on this, so do you have some conditions for us to consider?
I do, I have a set of six conditions for you to consider this evening. Conditions one through three are conditions to be met prior to the signing of plans. Condition one is the incorporation of the plans as amended to the date of this approval, and that includes two primary plans, the proposed garage replacement plan and the alternative location exhibit plan. Condition two is incorporation of all the documentation submitted within the application package as part of the approval, should the board choose to move forward. Condition three is the applicant shall be responsible for the payment of all recording fees related to the notice of decision on the case. Conditions four through six are conditions to be met prior to any building permit approval or construction activity, and that includes the compiling, or complying with the preconstruction siltation erosion control measures as shown on the plan, which in this case is really focused on silt fencing, as shown on the plan. Condition five is inspection by the town prior to construction of all the required siltation devices, and then condition six is the Wellands Boundary Monumentation in compliance with 175.9.1 of the Wellands Ordinance. Conditions one through six.
Okay, thank you, and I just wanted to comment on section 175.10B, one and two, because this, this was rather recently amended, and it was amended because the planning board had an application of a structure within an already previously disturbed area, and at that time decided that really the ordinance needed some flexibility for structures that existed and needed to be rebuilt, so I, I think this project fits, certainly meets that criteria. Somebody want to make a motion?
Make a motion, we approve, it's number 2019-16, tax map 149-003.
With the conditions.
With the conditions.
Okay, thank you, second. Motion has been made and seconded, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Okay, thank you very much, folks.
Thanks very much, and I want to thank the town planner, did a good job as well. Thanks, Matt.
Thanks, Randy.
Okay, Vaughn is coming back to join us. Okay, the, the next application, Alec, Alan Frederickson, Top of the Hill Farm. This is a site plan review for a farm stand building, tax map 182-4, case 2019-17. Okay, would you want to make a presentation, and then Matt will also, once you finish, add some items?
Good evening, for any of you that don't know me, I'm Alan Frederickson, and I operate Top of the Hill Farm, along with my wife and my two children. We have been operating the farm for approximately 15 years, and we have currently been selling our products within the garage of our home for approximately the last 10 years. We got the idea to construct this building of approximately 1,050 square feet, basically to make it just a little bit more attractive to our customers that, that come up and purchase meats and our other farm products from us, so that's what brought us here tonight. Basically, I, I think you all have a site plan in front of you that I had drawn out. I know we are asking for a few waivers, I think, also tonight, that Matt is gonna get involved in, and I guess I'll ask if the board has any other questions of me.
Okay. Okay, folks, do you have any questions at this point?
I can walk through my review, too, if it might be a little helpful here.
Okay.
So, a pleasure to work with Alan, kind of frankly, helping him put this application together, sort of learning a little more about Top of the Hill Farm. It sort of started with a conversation between Corey Ryder, the building inspector, Alan and myself, about not just adding this 1,050 square foot building, but also doing additional 60 by 100 building that you'll see shown on the site plan, but is not subject to the review of this board, in my opinion. The farm stand building is, though, because it's really a retail structure, but with that said, it's not really a retail use in the context of the zoning ordinance, so it doesn't need a variance to proceed. It's really an accessory use to the agricultural use that is fully permitted within this zone. So the question of use, when it comes to zoning ordinance, is not an issue, but the planning board still has a role in approving things like parking and access to the site, those sorts of things, so that's why this application has come before you tonight. And I sort of justified that on page one of my review, looking at RSA 674-32C. I also want to point out, too, that under RSA 2134A, this does truly qualify as a farm stand, particularly because a large portion of its goods are sold, or the goods that it sells are produced right there on the farm, so it certainly qualifies within that farm stand definition, and therefore is further permitted under the zoning. Looking with Mr. Frederickson at the application materials and the site plan that he had drawn up, it's, it's an interesting site, obviously, it's 99 acres in size, it's not the smaller sized lot that we're accustomed to looking at, much of the site is existing, and really the modification is just the addition of this building to a relatively flat, flat space that exists in the lot. There were several portions of the site plan review regulations that I felt may need waivers as I looked through it, and I've worked with Alan a little bit on this and was a bit conservative. Things like utilities, even stormwater drainage on the lot are not changing substantially, and really, because of the lot's size, I don't think that they're applicable to this application, but I think it's best that the board formally waive those, if they find it appropriate in the end, and you can see that full list of waivers contained within your packet with some justification to them. The parking is provided on site. One of the things that I would ask Mr. Frederickson to comment on, I think for the, for the purposes of the board, is to clarify where exactly those five parking spaces are, and we can maybe do that in a minute, but that was one item that I did note in the application. Parking is identified, both next to the building, proposed building, and along the sort of circle towards the south end of the lot as well, there's a few parking spaces there, but I think we should get a better sense of just where the parking is gonna be. There's no real landscaping proposed here, but again, I don't feel it necessitates it, we're not creating new parking, there's no need for streetscaping or buffering, because it's not close enough to an adjacent property, I don't feel there's any need for that installation here. Drainage is obviously an interesting one, we are creating new impervious surface coverage, but if we were to do the calculations here, I think the impervious coverage would be quite negligible when it comes to a 99 degree, a 99 acre lot, so I didn't really feel that it was necessary to have a drainage analysis for the project. No storage, no change there, Alan clears his snow, and I assume will continue to do so moving forward. Lighting is one item that may need some clarification, our lighting regs obviously call for full shield cutoff lighting, it's not, that is dark sky compliant. One unique piece about this is that my supposition is that Mr. Frederickson needs to light sort of adjacent sections of his property, so dark sky compliance might not be, and full shield cutoff might not be necessary here, so I have requested a waiver working with Mr. Frederickson to, in the lighting section of the regulations. No clear wetland impacts, there was not a certified wetland scientist, but I did work with Alan to get a hydro soils map, and that's included in your packets for review, along with the 10-foot contours. Solid waste, I believe, will be disposed of internally. No flood plain impacts, I have not recommended the full holding of financial security, this is totally in line with other decisions where a building is really the only thing being constructed here, there are no large site improvements that I think a bond is needed for. And then from a design review perspective, a rendering of the building has been included in your packet for review, it's a small Morton building, much like the other 60 by 100 building that Mr. Frederickson is proposing to the rear of the lot. That withstanding, I think there are some waivers for the board to consider this evening, but I think this is really a, generally a use that should be promoted by the planning board, it certainly is promoted within the zoning ordinance, and I think it's a positive one for the town of Wolfboro.
Okay, thank you.
I have a curious question, that through these blue sections of the map, it says all hydro, what are we talking about?
So, that's, that's a good question. So this, this soils data comes from the, the NRCS, which is really a kind of a federal level with state entities, so it's not fine scale for your purposes, Peter, this is, this is 30,000 scale mapping, basically, of wetlands based on soil typology.
So it just has soil type rather than...
That's exactly right, yep.
It's going across all these contours, so it's not...
Right, so these are not NWI wetlands, they're not the National Wetlands Inventory, they're, they're hydro soils based on NRCS soil typologies.
And I, I will note that... And I will note that most everything that we do on the farm, we work with NRCS on. They're involved in many projects that we have completed in the past, as well as projects that we have ongoing. They have their soil conservation people there all the time. They have engineers there all the time. We work with them quite a bit.
It was more my question of what that blue stuff, man, you had nothing to...
Yeah. I just thought I'd point that out, so, yeah.
Okay, go ahead, go ahead.
Good evening. Thanks for coming in. I'm excited for you. I'm real happy that you can do something that will benefit your property and expand it to allow more people to get there and sell more product and do the things that you want to do. I had one question about the farm stand. What happens, somebody needs a bathroom or something? What do they do when they come to the site?
Currently, right now, we have a bathroom that's right adjacent to the area where we sell our meat. And if someone, someone asks us to use a restroom, we allow them to use that.
So, there was, there's been some conversation with Alan, Corey, and I about providing a bathroom in the, in the building. I think we, there hasn't been a decision on that. Is that correct?
Not, not as of yet.
No, that's, it's...
But it is a question.
It's like, I see the parking. You got, you got an area of 25 by 42 that you're going to expand, and that's going to be a parking. So you're going to have six, could have six people in different vehicles there that show up at one time. I'm just, I'm just thinking about what happens.
Right.
And I, and I had the same concern in my memo. I think we...
Corey, you know, I have had these discussions as to whether it's going to have a bathroom inside the building. We also brought up whether a porta potty would be sufficient for this. I mean, you visit a lot of other farm stands, whether they're in Wolfboro or other towns around, and a lot of them operate with porta potties. Some of them operate with nothing. But I, you know, I agree, I agree there should be something.
Yeah, I don't want to impose something. It's going to make it a hardship for you. But I'm just trying to, and we work together here. I'm just trying to, you're going to increase your business, and I want you to. So...
Right, right.
Yeah, I think it's, I think it's a good question. I've sort of thought that we can handle that on the building program inside of things with the code, the code review. But I think it's a good question that has already, has already come up. Because I think whether Alan knows it or not, his business is probably going to increase when he improves his facility. I think he does know it. But he might have a lot more people there than he anticipates. So I think that he needs to be prepared for some people have to use a bathroom.
And it came up also at TRC.
It did.
Yeah, right.
What is, what is the seasonal use of that farm stand, just out of curiosity?
We actually, because so much of our product is meats, we actually sell them year round.
Year round?
Yeah.
I mean, I was just wondering whether it was a temporary, I mean, a structure to close the bathroom down in the summertime, around the wintertime rather?
As I said, we do sell year round.
Could you just expand a little more on where the parking will be?
Sure. On the plan, I think I noted a couple different spots on there. One of them is kind of off the circle area there. I could come over and show you, Kathy, real quick.
This area here, this is the new area that I had proposed.
Okay.
This area over here that's existing, this is all, this would be as if we came up Martin Hill Road. This is all pavement existing. Right now, there's room for cars there. And to make this area here bigger.
Okay, and that would be the five, yes.
That makes it...
We also actually have some room for vehicles here, but...
Okay.
That's what I...
Okay, great.
Mentioned that if you're getting the farm stand out of your garage, now you can park your cars in there.
That's correct. As well as my snowplow back in the wintertime.
How would you approach an ADA being accessible? Would you give them a spot in the front, or designate something of that nature for them?
I think in that area that I had closest to the proposed building, that would be the area to do that. That area is relatively level.
Alan, could you show us some of the pictures, just what that area looks like? Because they didn't get all of these pictures. So if you can just show us which area that is, you'll see, yeah, you can, yeah, that's, that's fine. If you can just show each of the members, maybe, real quick. Just the parking area, because I think it's clear when you look at that parking area, it's really flat.
That top one, does that show at the base?
Yeah, I think so.
B, C, D, E, F, G, H, I, J, K, L, M, N, O, P, Q, R, S, T, U, V, W, X, Y, Z. So where's that building, that red building right there? That's right.
Okay.
Just that I'm going to come across the ground and tie that back in. Relatively level as far as...
That's a huge area.
Okay, thank you. I think the, Mr. Sullivan has justified the waivers for this application. Does anybody have any issues or questions about them? If not, I would entertain a motion to grant the requested waivers.
I'm moved.
Seconded.
Okay, motion has been made and seconded. All in favor, please say aye. Aye, opposed, abstentions. Okay, with the granting of the waivers, then this application is considered complete. Again, if someone would make a motion to accept the application as complete.
Removed.
Motion has been made and seconded. All in favor, please say aye. Aye, opposed, abstentions. Okay, if there's any member of the public that wanted to comment on this proposal or ask any question, now would be the time to do that. Everybody all set? Okay. All right. Planning board members, did you have any other questions? Okay, Mr. Fredrickson, did you have anything else you wanted to add?
I don't think so. No, at this time. I think, you know, it's pretty clear.
Okay, all right. Well, this is certainly a use that is supported by the zoning ordinance. And this district was created with the idea of agriculture and farming. So I think this is certainly in conformance with our ordinance. Do you have some conditions?
Three, three conditions. One, incorporation of the plans. That's the site plan that Mr. Fredrickson prepared. Two, applicant shall be responsible for payment of the recording fee for the notice of decision. And then three, all the information that's in the application will be incorporated into the approval. Questions one through three.
Okay, thank you. Okay, somebody be interested in making a motion to approve this farm stand at 50 Martin Hill Road?
So moved.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. All in favor, please say aye. Aye, opposed. Okay.
Thank you very much.
Granted.
Okay.
Thank you very much for the time you spent on this. Okay, next item on the agenda is the opportunity for public comment. Does anyone want to make any comments to the planning board, if you'd like to do that? Now is the time to do it. Okay, night, folks. Okay. Okay, no one is present to make any comments. So the next item...